Yeah, we're all, we're all stuck in the same way.
Alright, good evening everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. Uh, thank you for joining us for this Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. Um, as we call to order, I would ask if you plan to make a public comment this evening. Do you completely agree with our direction at this time, if you have already done so? Uh, I would ask you to silence your cell phones and remove your hats and as we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we can do the roll call, Mr. Keller.
Amy, Hanson, present.
I'm here.
Murphy.
Present.
O'Donnell.
Present.
Ramberg.
Present.
And Mark.
Present.
Alright, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
A move of support.
A move in support of adopting the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Up first tonight, as always, are our reports and we will start our student board representative, Ella Clark. Couldn't be here this evening. She's got a volleyball commitment, but I believe Mrs. Thomas is gonna read her report and back up the student representatives.
Alright. At LHS, organizations and activities are well underway. All sports have been running smoothly and the Flint Metro League manages are very soon. Organizations like Student Council, NHS, and FCA have all started meeting, either with officers or whole groups. As homecoming is fast approaching, dance tickets will start next week, and court nomination choices that were sent out today for students to vote for. Pot o'clock practices start tomorrow as well. At Linden Elementary, sports have begun like the high school. Also, they recently held class meetings for each grade to hear about the middle school and other expectations. This morning, new students were welcomed with a breakfast event in the media center. At Central Elementary, recently, they held a STORE kickoff assembly. Students came together by grade and learned about STORE. Stay safe, offer kindness, act responsibly, remember respect, expectations. Everything went well with their first lockdown environment of the year. Student picture day is September 11th, next Thursday. At Hyatt, they are very excited that their renovations are set to complete base dive this fall. And at Linden Elementary, they held their open house on August 19th with all positive feedback. Currently, they are in the process of reteaching STORE expectations. From Ella.
Alright, thank you Cheryl. Thank you to Ella for providing that report given in her access. Uh, up next is the superintendent reporter, Mr. Selsky.
Thank you and welcome everybody for being here this evening. A couple things to report out on. Uh, at our last Board of Ed meeting, Mr. Terriff Phillips made public comments about the amount of time allotted for public comments. Board Policy 0167.3 does establish a three-minute timeframe for individual public comments. This policy also indicates that the presiding officer may extend the timeframe if necessary. A speed limit, school zone in Argentine. Last week, we were contacted by Argentine Township about the school speed zone in front of the Argentine building. After some discussion, Mr. Greg Baddeus sent a communication to the Genesee County Road Commission, letting them know that we no longer had students attending Argentine. We anticipate that the Genesee County Road Commission will get rid of the school speed zone signs in front of that building. Even though it is an operational school building, it does have students, excuse me, it does not have students in attendance. According to Michigan compiled law 257.627A, having student instruction scheduled is one of the criteria for the enforcement of the school speed zone. Moving forward, we have heard back from Genesee County Road Commission, uh, and they will remove the signs if students are able to back in that building. Uh, again, then they can move, put those signs back up, uh, for a speed zone, excuse me, school speed zone. Student enrollment update. Our student enrollment currently sits at 2,313 FTE, full-time equivalents. In comparison, last year at this time, we had 2,362 FTEs. If you remember, in June, we based our budget on 2,312 FTEs for plus one. We are still in the process of finalizing our numbers and will not have official school counts until Fall Count Day, which is October 1st of 2020-25. We are seeing an increase in our pre-K and kindergarten numbers in comparison to last year. Uh, this year, we're currently set at 191 pre-K and K students, comparison to 178 from last year. A budget update. As many of you know, we are still without a state-approved budget for the 25, 26 schooling year. By law, the state must approve a K-12 funding budget by July 1 of each year so districts can plan with certainty. This did not happen. If lawmakers do not act, a state government shutdown on September 30th could delay school, the funding schools depend on operating, beginning with our first scheduled state aid payment on October 20th of 2025. Tomorrow, the Genesee County Intervened School District will release communications on behalf of the 21 public school district across Genesee County that provide information to our stakeholders. I will be sending this information out to our community. I encourage the board and our voters to continue to push our legislature to finalize the school budget that prioritizes education and does not take money away from our students. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ross. Alright, any board members with reports this evening? Ms. Ramberg?
I was just gonna say that I really enjoyed the walkthrough at the Early Childhood Center that we did on the 18th. And I hope all the students and the staff are excited of the improvements of all the buildings that have happened this year. Um, and I have been around some of the traffic at the Hyatt building and the parents who are troopers, you guys did an amazing job during the drop-off and pickup lines. But yeah, I'm just really proud and really hope that every student feels welcome and is having a great start to the year and the staff.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Haney?
Finds a little bit of a ditto comment. Um, on the 18th at 5 o'clock, we did attend the, fellow board members attended the Early Childhood Center Rhythm Cutting Ceremony. Uh, it was a great event. You guys did a great job. Um, the turnout was fantastic. We had a tremendous amount of young kids there and it was great to see them utilizing the new play area and making it through the building. Point of note for us, it's wet a lot. Air conditioning is not point. They did a very nice job with that. If you ever look to get cooled down, please feel free to go over there because it's wonderful. But nice job. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Haney. I think it's plenty cool in this room. Did I yell? Is that in the word part? I don't know, they're this way. Ms. Hanson?
Uh, I, I attended the MASK Summer Institute last month. Um, had some great conversations inside classes and outside classes with board members across the state. Um, some of those included strategies for hearing student voices, um, ideas for better community engagement, um, some information to include in the onboarding process of the board members, um, ideas for policy review, and extending invitations to our legislators for more school events.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Um, yeah, last week when schools started at Hyatt, there was an issue with the lanes for the parent drop-off being affected by the Child Center. And it caused cars to be parked out all the way to Linden Road. Has that been addressed? Uh, I know it went on for a couple days last week and then, I think, previous week actually, and last week, it was addressed. How, how has that been solved?
Uh, I didn't get, Tim, I, I thank you for bringing that up. I maybe should have included in my weekly report. I will, and you typically don't. But yes, we had a plan in place for our school starting to acclimate our Hyatt parents, uh, to a one-lane system so we could use the outside lane of that drive for the early childhood pickup. Uh, we monitored the plan. Uh, let me back up. We also added a turnaround lane in the middle of the Hyatt parking lot to help alleviate uh, Hyatt parents so they could get out quicker. And we also added an access point, uh, for ECC parents. So once they picked their child up, they could exit out of the bus loop. Uh, we started school, ECC did not start until September 2nd. So we let the plan work so we could identify potential problems so we could have potential solutions. Uh, my hats are off to Mr. Stricker, Ms. McRavitch, Mr. Baddeus, because we, as we identified, uh, potential bottlenecks or problems, they came up with a, a very good solution. Uh, that solution was communicated out to our parents from Hyatt Elementary and our ECC parents, uh, last Thursday in preparation for Tuesday's start with ECC. Uh, basically, the solution, we would still remain in a one-lane system for Hyatt parents. ECC parents would stay in the outside lane, uh, to work their way to the ECC entrance. Please keep in mind that our ECC dismissal starts at 3:15. Our Hyatt dismissal starts at 3:42. And so, with our conversations, we anticipated that most of those ECC parents would be out of there by 3:42-ish. And so, in the communications, we told the parents that beginning at around 3:45, they could double up in that entrance lane and then use the zipper technique that, uh, we used last year, that seemed to, to work last year. And I know after the first two days, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, the two days of, of having this plan in place, uh, John, the timing has been 3:52. Everybody's been out, ish?
We're.
I'll let you correct that.
No, I'm sorry. Last year, at our best case scenario, 3:55 to 3:57 every day. This year, right now, we're at 4:02.
4:02.
And so, we're within five minutes. And you've got ECC is gonna fluctuate because some days are heavier than other days as far as how many kids they have in attendance. So Mondays and Wednesdays are gonna be a longer wait for parents than Tuesdays and Thursdays per se. So if we were able to do the zipper at 3:40 today and had everybody off, standing at 3:51 or 3:50, we had the entire thing cleared up.
Did I have any cars on Linden Road today?
There could have been some down beyond the corner. I get out by the thing, so I don't know, but.
Well, I think we also have to remember, uh, as I pointed out in my communications, when I sent the communication to the board, um, based on calculations, which Mr. Stricker has been doing, um, we have approximately 180 parent pickups right now, which is 50% of our building. Uh, which I believe in comparison to last year, uh, we, we were at about 130-ish?
Yeah, it's, it's an increase.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, the first week it happened, that my daughter was actually out on Linden Road and their fire truck came on and there's no room for really. They cannot get off the road completely because of not enough shoulder there on Linden Road if you're trapped out there trying to make the corner, come onto, stand even, whatever. So, I'm just shocked that the police didn't say something about it. That is true. This has gotta be resolved. This cannot, you cannot have any cars off. Shouldn't have them on, on the same, you know, but we've done that fast. That's what, that's. But somehow, I don't, I don't understand how the zipper, regardless of whether the zipper is working or not, you're moving one full stream of cars along Hyatt to pick up the Hyatt kids, the K3 kids. That's no different than it was in pass because all you did, you still had one row in front of the building. It zipped out by the corner. So two became one. So why is it taking longer than it did last year to, to get all the kids out of the building when there's just one row? It's the same. So, I don't know. Just, can I go on?
Alright, just as a reminder too, I guess we'll remind all of ourselves, um, this time for board reports is not a time for dialogue between board members and superintendent or anyone else to give reports out. Um, any items that would like to be added as discussion items under the board agenda can be brought forward for the night's coordinating. I certainly think this is an important topic, but I just want to remind everyone that the time for reports is not a time for, like, dialogue between all of us. Thank you. Um, that'll be part of my report. The other part of my report tonight is, uh, just like others had mentioned, we attended the River Cutting and then I also attended the teacher welcome back, um, a couple weeks ago and was able to give a little welcome back to the teachers and staff on behalf of the board and that was, um, it's always kind of a fun little event in the morning. I don't know how everybody feels about being there, so rarely getting a professional development rolling for the day, but I enjoyed the time that I was able to spend there, um, and kind of kick off the new school year on behalf of the board. So, that was good. And that's all I have for this evening. Alright, as far as special presentations go, um, we will move along to our, uh, Community Education Director, Ms. Elizabeth Bonico, who is gonna give us an update on the multi-purpose building and community education.
Good evening, everyone. Start off with my PowerPoint, um, multi-purpose building and community education. So I'll cover some summer updates and where we are moving forward. What summer did look like here. Athletic practices. Cheer was busy. Boys and girls basketball, baseball, softball, football, lacrosse, volleyball, and wrestling. All those sports came in. They had their good turnout with their kids. Um, they were busy at different buildings. Everything from the high school to the multi-purpose building was busy. They weren't all sleeping in. What summer also looked like were camps. Uh, boys and girls basketball both put on camps, um, very successful. Uh, the picture there you see is the younger girls. Uh, I believe it was a three-day camp, uh, very well enrollment with that one. Uh, cheer, always popular camp. Cross-country races at the park, they did. A few rain-out days for that. That was unfortunate, but that's what you get with cross-country, right? Um, football did forge, very, very popular. A lot of the parents really liked sending their kids to the forge camp. Um, it was different, uh, like circuit training that Mr. Coach Williams put on with them. So, very well liked by the kids. Uh, legends and boat week was very popular, uh, with the community, boys and girls alike. Uh, lacrosse skills camps, uh, continue to happen, very popular here. Robotics, I got a chance to go and visit them a couple times at the middle school. Um, the kids were loving it and the, uh, coach for that did a fantastic job welcoming kids from all other districts. Were there. Uh, track and field put on a little camp and it was adorable. Got to see that sometime. Girls volleyball, also popular, and wrestling, they brought in Josh Barr. He is a, uh, champion wrestler from, uh, Pennsylvania. So very popular to have him and they were lucky to get him in. Summer also looked like, as far as programs, we had a Go Wild Archery program. Um, kids did like that. Gymnastics continues to grow. Um, in fact, we're in need of about three coaches right now to help out with gymnastics. Jazzercise is popular. Uh, junior NBA was busy in our building. Uh, little league, obviously, you've seen on the fields if you've driven around. Pickleball continues. Travel baseball, travel softball. The Unified Walking Club used the track in the indoor track when it rained a couple times. And lacrosse is visible always. So in June, we were open 21 days, um, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Wednesday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 o'clock, Thursday and Friday. This was because on Monday through Wednesday, we had, uh, junior NBA in there. 538 people approximately signed in and walked or ran the indoor track. 165 signed in to use the fitness room. 36 did open gym, which was mainly basketball. And 321 pickleballers, this is approximate because we do not sign in for pickleball, but we kind of go by numbers. Seven, and with the sign-in sheet, um, I changed it up a little bit. I have a couple columns in there that, um, tell us what district that people are coming from. Um, I kind of wanted to know who was actually using our building and how far were they coming to use it. So I found out for June, 75% were Linden. Um, not necessarily Linden schools, Linden demographic, Linden city limits. 8% Fenton, 8% were out of town, 5% for Lake Fenton, and 4% came from Byron. July, same hours, same thing with junior NBA. 445 walked or ran the indoor track, 238 in the fitness room, 25 open gym, that's down. 238 pickleball players, that was down a little bit. It's nice out. They're gonna play on the courts outside. 83% were Linden, 9% Fenton, 5 Lake Fenton, 1 Byron, 1 Heartland, and 1 out of town. August was 21 days open, same hours, same junior NBA. 452 walked or ran the track, 168 joined the fitness room. 51 were in open gym, so we're up a little bit. Kids are kind of gearing back. 455 pickleball players, so we're starting to gear back in and kind of weatherhead a part of nails. 87% were Linden, 7 Fenton, 3 Lake Fenton, 1 Byron, 1 Heartland, 1 out of town. So the fall programs. When we were looking at what we were gonna offer for the fall, what, obviously, we're gonna look at what was successful. So, um, looking at the summer guide and the past, uh, guide from the other years, what's a success is the babysitter CPR class. Breakfast was Santa, they did. The craft show was a good, um, idea and thing that happened, so that we're gonna continue that. Gymnastics, jazzercise, junior NBA, that's recreational basketball, the mother-son daddy-daughter dance, huge. Recreational pickleball, recreational volleyball, and, um, the sports, cheer basketball, lacrosse and softball, those are great for camps that generally the coaches will run those. So what we came up with new from looking at other schools and ideas from the community, uh, a book club, we're gonna be offering. We're offering a salad dough workshop, popular item now. Uh, parent-child yoga. We have a teacher that has just gotten her certification in yoga, um, intervention teacher. So she's gonna join in and do something like that. Adult Beginning Yoga is going to be brought by one of your tech, um, directors. Competitive pickleball, we're offering, that was a request, and we're going to do a structured toddler time. There was a turf toddler time that was done when the turf was down, but we've had a lot of requests and there's a lot of littles that come through the building and it was like, hey, what can we do for them? And I've talked to a couple of the pickleball players that come in and one of them's a retired teacher and I was like, you know, how old are you, you know? So, she's gonna stay an hour and do a structured time with them. And moving forward. So what, um, I've found, talking with Katie and Diane, and we've implemented a few new things in the building. Uh, registrations are online from now on. They can, they can call, we can do them over the phone, but the paper, it, it just wasn't working. And by the time they can mail it in and we get it from the post office, the class could be canceled or it's full and there's just aggravation with that. And then we're still calling them to collect pay. Uh, the fee schedule has been updated, so the cost of renting the building, um, facility usage by people coming from the outside has been adjusted to reflect other guidelines with other schools and other programs and facilities around, um, from Flint to down the Heartland and Brighton area. Uh, multi-purpose guidelines have then, uh, restructured and sent, uh, those were brought to the coaches, to the coaches meeting, I talked with them. And those are also, um, sent to people when they rent the facility. A new waiver of liability, um, I guess there was an issue just before I got here, so that was addressed. Um, did a lot of work with, uh, Kylie and the lawyers. And so, a new waiver of liability, um, was put into place. And with that, every, it started July 1st, we started and I borrowed Lance's, uh, guides there for the front of the building. And everybody kind of had to walk through the maze to fill out the waiver of liability. Safety's a big deal to me and when I don't know who's in the building and if somebody gets hurt and they're walking, they're, you're not bringing in your purses, I don't know who you are. I don't know what to do. I don't know, you know, if it's an allergy or you got hurt. So, that's a big deal to me to have emergency contact. Uh, that was a high priority. So everybody that comes into the building to walk or to use the fitness room has to fill out the waiver of liability, also pickleball players. There's a, the new sign-in sheet like I talked about before. I wanted to get the demographics down, um, so that's been good to know. Uh, weekly schedules are sent to lead staff before they were just sent to, uh, Dan Lamoff and some of the principals and his students. And now I wanted to include the administrative assistants and, uh, coaches, ADs, and other secretaries because they, everybody needs to know what's going on in the building. I didn't like, when I was a secretary, getting a phone call and I couldn't answer the question of, "A where's girl scouts tonight?" So everybody does get, uh, what's going on in the, uh, district. Let's see. Uh, multi-purpose building will be open on Saturdays, starting this Saturday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Pickleball will run from 9:00 to 11:00 and then there'll be open gym. With that being said too, it is open for coaches to try to get in. Um, and also, uh, we've got a few other plans I'll talk about in a minute for that. But it will be open from 8:00 to 4:00, the fitness room and the track for anybody, you know, as usual, to use it. And I've gotten a good response. I've talked to some of our walkers this morning and they're like, "Are you open this Saturday?" And I'm like, "Oh, we are." And she goes, "I'll be here." So, they're noticing and they're appreciating. Multi-bil, uh, purpose building, fitness center and track, um, is going to, is open to the staff. We started that yesterday. Um, from 5:00 in the morning until 7:00 in the morning. I guess I could have put AM or PM. It's AM. And so, what it is then is staff only. It's not staff and their families or their kids, um, because it could be a problem. Some, like, bring elementary kids and then it just kind of turns into a babysitting fiasco. So, um, more than welcome staff to, we were promoting it and encouraging staff to come in and Brent Rogers is heading that. And, um, I'm there about 5:30 so he can take off to go home to get his kids ready for school. So, he's there for some guidance if anybody wants a workout plan or do circuit training with him, or you just be on your own. Looking ahead, uh, renting to businesses and companies for team building. I put that in the second page of the catalog and we've gotten two people already, just today I did, signed up for, um, looking into having our team room. They just wanted a, a place to have a different meeting area for their staff. Uh, renting for birthday parties. We've got three on the books right now for birthday parties. Um, they can rent the gym, half of it or full of it, all, the full gym for $250 for two hours and they get a team room with that. Uh, reunions and gatherings. I've got, um, a woman calling back and she wants to give her mother a 90th birthday party there and I was like, "Come in and check it out first. It might work for them." Uh, Cranston Stadium rental, I'm working on that. I've got one football game I'm gonna call as, um, Metro Schools looking. And actually, this Friday, Tom Las and Mason Erie will be renting the turf facility because of the away football game. And Jeff Nagy and Pam Baird have helped me, um, to agree to help put this on and show them what Linden is all about. Uh, the 2026 Open Soccer Tournament. So, uh, we've had, um, now that the soccer group is, the Bucks, the Flint City Bucks, has used our turf field before, just rented it for a game. And they have gotten the opportunity to hold the Open Cup Soccer Championship in Michigan. They haven't done it, I guess, since 1994, Michigan hasn't had it. And they asked Flint City Bucks, and there's only one other team that offered to do it. If Flint City Bucks gets it, they wanna use that facility. So that's a good publicity for Linden. Community engagements, looking ahead, we're thinking of dog shows, movie nights out on the turf, motivational nights, self-help seminars, daily routines, support groups for challenging students. And these are just a few pictures of, I wanted to include of who you're touching with this place. The high school group of kids, those are my three walkers in the center there, every morning, seven o'clock on the dot. And the gentleman that works out, he's a trainer, has three kids in the district, he comes in every day about seven fifteen. That bottom picture is the middle school cafeteria, that was your back-to-school blast, where three, four hundred kids came to pick out backpacks, coats, clothes, and things for school. And gymnastics picture, and those are some pickleballers. Any questions or comments?
Thank you so much, Liz, and also, thank you for the popcorn. I think you were responsible for bringing us some snacks, so thanks. I don't know if you were hoping we'd be busy munching and then we'd just come back.
Yeah, so you weren't paying attention to me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, thank you though. I was gonna ask if board members could attend at five to seven AM, but then I thought, no, I don't get up that early, so never mind that.
I was gonna invite, I think you'd be good.
Yeah, yeah, right, we'll both be there.
It's still Saturday, so really.
True. All right, any, thank you for all the information, it sounds like it's been a really busy summer, and despite, you know, you just kind of getting going as the new community head director, we really appreciate your attention to the details of some of the things you mentioned, like, you know, just the sign-in sheet difference and the liability waiver, things that are really important to the district, but you know, just, you know, it's been a busy couple of years getting that building up and running, and so you know, no disregard to how it was being done before, but I appreciate coming in with fresh eyes and like paying attention to some of those details and being able to, you know, present them to us so quickly as well, so some of the new programming was really exciting. Also, I'm kind of thinking outside of the box, but like something for everyone, which is great, so. Any comments from other board members? Ms. Hanson?
No questions, just a comment, thank you for the presentation. I'm really excited to see all the new ideas and all the new programs implemented and all the possibilities for communities, so thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Ms. Bonneville, for the presentation, congratulations on joining the team at Linden here.
Thank you.
Glad to see you here. In regards to the MPB, is there any cost to utilize that facility, like what are the hours currently right now for during the week for that building?
So there is no cost to walk the track or to use the fitness room.
Okay.
And I know that was, that was something when I first got there, actually, that I'm like, wow, this is free, because it's amazing. And people love it. That was one of the points of why I wanted to find out where everybody was coming from, because if they were coming from so far out and they weren't our family, I might want to charge them. But they're mostly our family. And who's walking, yeah, most. And who's walking and using that fitness center is just, it, it's so great to see some of the older people coming in, they can't afford, I know they can't, you know, they're getting by, they're out of fixed income, and right now, we're in times, and how it started out, I'm just kind of comfortable with leaving it how it is for now.
Sure, yeah, I don't have a problem.
Looking for revenue for the place, that's why I'm kind of pushing the birthday parties, I'm pushing this, let's rent these team rooms out, let's get some, you know, I'm talking to a few businesses about them doing a team building pickleball tournament for the day, you know, as a team building thing, so looking at revenue for those types of things, and if I can get them, that outside turf rented and keep it safe and keep it clean, that's gonna bring some money in for the, for the area. Did I answer your only one?
Can, the, I appreciate your thought. Linden residents should for sure be free to participate in the building. I do have my doubts about whether or not, I think we probably should, I don't know how you do it, whether it'd be worth the effort to, with the small percentage of twenty-five percent made up of non-Linden people, realizing the facility. So the structure that it would take to get compensation from those people would be a question. You mentioned two fifty or renting a half the gym. Is that the MPB you're talking about?
Correct.
For a party?
Correct.
Isn't that scheduled to be open for free for everybody at that time?
So it's, it's not necessarily open for free, because I do have pickleball running. What's free always is the track and the fitness center for everybody all the time. But it is advertised, it will be advertised like weekly, if no one rents it, it will be open gym today. So we'll throw that out on Thrill Share, we'll throw that out on Facebook and on those blogs.
So you have ways to communicate that, people have shown up, they can do a free gym.
You bet.
Then there's a party going on.
That's right.
Okay, that's very good. In regards to all the other gymnasiums around the district, you oversee those rentals too?
I don't oversee them, no, I just follow the check prices.
I mean.
In, in our, in our district, yes, I do.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I work with Pete.
So athletic director?
Correct.
Okay, so teams understand, obviously, our school teams should have priority to utilize all the gyms.
That's right, they do.
Okay. We have club teams that are made up of non-Linden and non-Linden people. How are they slotted in to utilize the gyms?
That's great, so Pete lets me know the schedule, so I don't schedule anything for any other gym until I have the athletic schedule for Linden schools. After I have that, then I can plug in or people call me, hey, say you're eight-one-old lacrosse, even though it's Linden kids, but there are some that might not be Linden kids, then I can schedule that. And then there's a certain charge, and good question, so if a team has fifty percent or more Linden kids on their team, it's one rate. If you don't have hardly any Linden kids on your team, it's another rate.
Okay, and then, like I said, is it like a first-come, first-served basis at that point, just to lock up that?
Yes, that's right, yeah.
And will you be allowed to lock up the whole winter?
Yeah, it's difficult.
Like Tuesday night, seven o'clock every, every week?
Yeah, I do that, yep.
As long as they're willing to pay the price.
That's correct, you bet.
All right, good, well, again, thanks for joining the team here, and it sounds like you've got some great ideas on how to make it more just better trackable, and I think that's good information to have to try and move forward.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Anderson? Thank you for the presentation, I know you're doing an awesome job at everything. I'm gonna ask a question that I was wondering about, the charging or not charging. I'm kind of not a fan of not charging for out-of-residents, I want to be kind, but I think sometimes there could be a little bit of a probability, so depending on how big the programs get, possibly doing, even though it's small, be like four dollars a month, just something to use the facility down the road, it's gonna be a lot more than what Linden community residents. And then I have a big heart for seniors, so have you guys reached out to maybe any of the residential treatments, or not treatments, I was at the centers, like Vincinia, Wellbridge, Symphony, like to see if they want to do something like a senior prom, maybe where some of the three or four places come and do a prom, I know we've done homecoming, that would be really cool. Just something more for the seniors who are in our community, or like Lion, I know that's a big hit with some of the older generation, I just really want to pull the seniors in as much as possible.
Sure, sure, so with that, I do attend Girl Linden, which includes a lot of the senior groups and it's the chamber and all that. So with that, I see a lot, like, and I'm not gonna poo-poo the senior thing. There's a lot going on out that we don't, that I didn't know about, like through those senior programs, all these dances and car shows they have for them, so they are doing a lot, but I do reach out, yes. We have got the low-seed, we sponsor a dinner, and the problem with that, the only thing is, is sometimes we have a limited space, and I can't accompany for like so many, like the low-seed dinner, I'd love to do every senior, but they cap it at a hundred, because that's all we can fit right now type of thing. So that's a free event though, and so they're gonna come in and do a dinner, and they do, sorry, I'm not even talking to anyone, and auction items and things like that, so they love that. And also, we are holding in January or February, the Senior Olympics. So that's advertising, that's a free event, so that is gonna run in the multi-purpose building about nine AM till six PM.
Okay, so like if they want to do like a high school reunion, like they, all, all classes, sometimes I see through the park in Linden, and I'm like, oh, it's hot out, like they should have did, you know, the multi-purpose building, so I just kind of think those things at that.
Yeah, certainly, I'll bring it up at the Girl Linden, that if they ever, you know, if they need something, you know, because they do have those buses and can bring them over.
Yeah.
So, yeah, good ideas, thank you.
Great, so I just have a heart for a lot of the alumni that live here, and then sometimes they don't know because they know, they're not allowed, they're not on social media, so it's hard to reach them.
It is, it is, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we do not have any administrative updates this evening, this is how we have any public comments this evening, no public comments this evening. Seven just launched the consent agenda, which includes minutes from our regular meeting on August fifteenth, and the LMS Washington DC trip for October sixteen, twenty twenty-six. It is the administrative recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented, do I have a motion?
So move, support?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have one action item this evening, and that is the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six course list. And as always, this is the annual requirement for school districts for the Board of Education to adopt for the Michigan People Accounting Regulation, so hopefully everybody's had a chance to take a peek through this, since it is an action item this evening, I do need a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six course list as presented. And I'll support that, so with that, any questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a couple of discussion items this evening, and the first okay, the first discussion item this evening is to appoint the LCS delegate and alternate for the MASP Delegate Assembly on twenty, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. This is a discussion item this evening, so we don't need to make, take action on it until the next meeting, we can go on consent. But as most board members know, a couple of our newer board members might have to be aware, but every board elects a delegate to vote on updated MASP policy during the annual meeting, which usually is in October, November, every year, we vote on a delegate and an alternate in case a delegate cannot attend. I know in years past, Mr. Baker, myself, Ms. Hanson, I think it's a body based on this, I don't know, a variety of us have done this in the past. This year, I know Ms. Hanson and Miss Ramberg are both attending the conference, so hopefully between the two of you, one of you, you're taking the delegate or the alternate?
I'm going to go again.
Okay, Ms. Murphy, you can attend that as well?
I don't think so.
Okay, yeah, I don't think I can either, but all right, so, I mean, unless anybody's gonna jump out of their chairs to arm wrestle either of these ladies over, I would say we will go ahead and move forward, Ms. Ramberg can be our delegate, and Ms. Hanson can be the alternate delegate. Just so you're both aware, you both can attend the assembly, you would just be the vote on the cap of Linden, it's kind of an interesting thing to attend, actually, it was a lot different than I expected to speak for a time. Yeah. So any other comments on this, discussion items, or discussion? I like discussions when I'm the only one discussing, okay, perfect, so we'll off with that, I consent for next time, can you vote? Our next discussion item this evening is for the LHS Overnight Trip Request for the Europe trip in twenty twenty-seven, and this is one of Dr. George's trips that she and Mr. Snyder and other members of the high school English department so graciously host, and have the opportunity to attend. So this is for a trip two years from now, everybody's had the opportunity to review the trip request, any questions or comments on this? Ms. Murphy?
Just scouring for the, is there an option for the insurance in case the trip gets canceled?
I, I'm sorry, Ms. Murphy.
Sorry. Is there, is there an option to pay the insurance in case something happens to the trip and gets canceled?
Yes, there is an option for that. I, I do not know if it is included, in the past, we have included it as part of the cost, just for that purpose, so everybody's safe, but I do not have that answer this time.
You, you don't know if it's built in with the forty?
I do not, for all purposes.
I was just looking again too, Mr. Mondeal, specifically in here, I know with like the DC trip, they build it right into the cost now. So I, I would imagine that that's built right into this cost as well, but that's a good question.
The other thing, the question is, is there a minimal number of students that have to participate in order to make it go? And is there like a group, like eight students, sixteen students, or something like that? Mr. Stauskas, do you know whether there's any minimum number of students?
I am unaware of any minimum. Typically in the past, good or bad, we have not had to worry about a cancellation, but I'm unaware of any minimum requirement.
That means that a certain number of our students probably have to sign up, you know, with the company.
Sure.
But we don't know what that number is.
Mr. Bonde, you did find on here, it's down on page twenty-two, that there was some global travel protection included in the cost.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the insurance was there. It probably was. I looked at that too, I'm sure of that. Okay, so we're not sure about any minimum, but we don't think there's any problems, so. We're not sure of any minimums, but we don't think there'll be a problem.
I, I'm not sure of what that number is, and at this time, I do not believe there will be a problem.
Any other questions or comments? I always just appreciate the staff that take their time, I know this, you know, it's probably rewarding for them to get to travel as well, but it's also a lot of work and a lot of responsibility to take our students all across the globe on some of these trips, but it's, you know, a travel opportunity of a lifetime for some of our students that may not have the opportunity to travel like this, and honestly, for the cost, it's a, it's a pretty good thing for your buck. I know students often have a parent that will go with them as well, so that becomes a nice opportunity for parent and student also, so just pass along our things as well to Dr. George and team for continuing to make these trips happen for our students, because I think it's pretty unique. Up next is the LMS Art Club proposal, so we get a proposal here on formalizing the LMS Art Club, which was a sort of a pilot during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So hopefully everybody's had a chance to kind of review through this proposal, and are there any questions or comments? Ms. Ramberg?
I just want to thank the staff for agreeing to do this, this is awesome, and I'm so excited for our kids to have our club. Yeah, this is another, I think it's just another opportunity for our students, so anybody who's willing to, you know, give their time, even if it's on the, you know, schedule for a little bit of extra stipend for their job responsibilities, it's an opportunity for our students that may not have other things to be involved in, so I think it's, I think it's great.
The, the one percent number, is that based on like the average teacher contract, or where does that come from?
It comes from the contract. Beliega contract, contract based on establishment of those type of costs.
I understand that, but the one percent is based on what number do you determine which will be?
Oh, per the contract, it's based on the BA salary and or BA plus fifteen, depending on that particular employee.
It is tied to the employee, employees' experience?
Yes.
So basically, it's one percent there?
That is correct. Well, one percent of the BA or BA plus fifteen schedule. So if somebody's got a master's degree, it doesn't go
Caps out of BA plus fifteen?
It doesn't go to MA, it caps out at BA plus fifteen.
Okay. But it is tied to the individual teacher?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Right, moving on to the next item, which sort of ties back to a previous item. The LHS British Literature Out-of-State Trip, scheduled for Stratford, Ontario on November thirteenth. We have a couple of high school English teachers that are requesting approval to take students from the British Literature class to Stratford for for performance, and I know they've done this in years past, another wonderful opportunity for our students. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to work through the request, any questions or comments? All right, we'll see you then, we'll consent for the next meeting, and just again, pass along. That I consent for the next meeting, and just again, pass along that gratitude for teachers that are going above and beyond to make these things happen for our students, so. Alright, last but not least, on our discussion items this evening is the early childhood staff compensation and contracts. So I know everybody's had an opportunity to kind of look through this information, which brings our early childhood staff to the minimum wage, actually above the minimum wage requirement currently, and then moving forward in line with the new minimum wage requirements based on Michigan's minimum wage schedule for increase. So I know we've had the opportunity to look through that. I don't know if Mr. Stelzke has additional comments. I know he's got a presentation that we've looked at, so yeah, just had information. Any questions or comments on this one? Ms. Ramberg?
That's an interesting discussion, so we can talk about this in the next meeting. I want to know if we can just jump to the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven rate, if we need to be, because when I see the different levels of pay, I'm not happy with what the associate teachers are paid at the lower levels, or even with the associate's degree. With the cost of inflation the last five years, it's, it's not enough. So I don't know, because I've only known the board for one year, how this sliding scale came about, but when you already have a higher amount of dollars for your wage, if it's an equal raise, although that, or at the top of the scale, or if it happens to break, if it goes at the bottom, it's not as helpful for them. So I don't know if we can just jump to the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven and leave it there for two years and see how the program is, is funding and if we still remain profitable, and then go from there. I just, I wanted to get that, that number above minimum wage for the, for the, for what I see.
Okay.
Alright, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah. Well, in regards to like associate teachers, basically it's what, a dollar twenty-seven for all categories? How are we increasing? Is that what I'm seeing?
So associate teachers?
Yeah.
Again, I apologize, Mr. Murphy.
The bachelors, for instance, the bachelors, seventy, seventy-three hour for twenty-five, twenty-six, going to nineteen for twenty-six, twenty-seven, that's a dollar twenty-seven hour increase?
Yes.
I think it's the same for all the different models.
So how we establish those particular rates, were based on, again, bringing that group, the lowest group up to minimum wage. And then in order to keep what I consider the gap, based on their, the employee's background. And then we move those rates all the way through.
Right. Well, I definitely, you know, I like seeing the lower ones brought up as fast as possible because I think it's a very important program for our district. And I think it's a real good opportunity to get students interested in coming to our district, make sure that this is the place that one end up, not somewhere else. So our staff, I think, is doing a great job from what I saw last year. Having an actual interaction with a couple of, my grandson getting involved. So, yeah, I'm sure that the cost, there is a cost, obviously, that they celebrate basically all that, this is Ramberg said. Is there a reason why we shouldn't consider this in your mind?
I put this two-year salary schedule in place for a couple reasons. We did have that discussion about going right to the end or not. And why I went with a two-year process is, A, unfortunately, we don't have a budget right now. Unfortunately, that does affect GSRP funding. You know, I think our intent is to try to make this as sustainable as possible because it does, it could potentially affect our general fund. GSRP over the last few years with the three K for all has been very beneficial. And we're seeing, we're starting to see that. So unfortunately, without those two factors, the state budget, I felt this was a more conservative approach to make sure that we put our employees in a position financially to be above the threshold, but also to be attractable. You comfortable with it? For new employees?
I guess my point is you're guaranteeing the rates twenty-six, twenty-seven through this contract.
I'm sorry?
Sorry. You're guaranteeing the rates with this two-year deal for twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yes.
So it's a cost of, what does it take to bump those staff members to that level for one year? Because you're guaranteeing an extra interest. So I think that's a number we should probably look at and say, is that something we could risk making that funding fly? And I don't think it's gonna be a big number, but it's just, yes, right now, at this moment, I'm seeing the hours and flying across the board.
I can tell you the annual cost, based on what you see in front of you, from twenty-five to twenty-six is approximately the twenty-three thousand dollars. And then from twenty-six to twenty-seven, based on the scales, it is approximately, I do my math right, twenty-eight thousand dollars.
So five thousand dollars increase?
About six thousand dollar increase from twenty-six to twenty-seven.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So that's something I think our budget, being as large that it is, could probably mean.
I think something we have to keep in mind, and I'm not, I don't disagree necessarily with what either of you were saying on this, because I definitely think it's something to think about. We have to keep in mind too, as a board, when we've traditionally taken the administrative recommendation on these contracts and costs, and we've recently approved some other contracts for other groups around the district in which we didn't just jump to minimum wage. And so that's something to think about is, you know, what, you know, why would this group be qualified for that jump right away when we didn't do it for other groups? I think the ESP group was the most recent one that made that. So yeah, the, anyway, just something for us to think about as a board. You know, we've traditionally taken the route of the administrative recommendation because we're not the ones in the negotiations. The superintendent, the administrative team are. I know there was some situations maybe a year or more ago with the same group working through some negotiations. So, you know, I want us to also be able to trust the administrators bringing us the recommendations here and, and not, you know, just jump in our lane to say, well, we think they should make more. Exactly, agree, but also there's been hall monitors and paraprofessionals and recesses and other people to come across our, you know, our personnel summary sheet that made minimum wage. And even though we might not feel like it's a minimum wage job, that's, that's what it is. And so I just want us to be cautious when thinking about that, to not set some kind of different precedent for one group and that will get it holistically for everyone, so.
So when you said that the number was twenty-three thousand, is that anyone for every one of these staff to get that raise? So that's gonna be less than two thousand dollars a month for the district? To bring them up a little bit more to minimum wage? Is it, is that the figure to be less than two thousand dollars a month if we brought them up? Or even if, even if we might have met halfway between twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven? Because I know that we're hiring staff, but again, this is not a union contract, and these are teachers and staff working with children, that's, I think, a very hard job. You have people with children, it's a lot of feedback coming from lots of people. And I just, I don't agree with the wage that we're offering an associate teacher. And some of these teachers, they take coursework, they're not trying to get higher level pay. They're not just coming in and serving a lunch. They are actually doing certificates, they're getting certified in certain things in order to get a raise. So I just think in order to keep up with other competing districts, we have to bump up the lowest pay a little bit more. And especially if it's only gonna be two thousand dollars more a month, that's, that's not that much.
Well, and that's one question about preemptive competing districts. How are we, Mr. Stelzke, when we compare this to other districts as far as the number goes?
It is, it is hard, as we discussed, I think it was two years ago, maybe last year even. It's very hard because there are districts, many of the districts that are not directly employed through the district. They're outsourced. So there is approximately anywhere from eighteen to twenty percent. Let me back that up. There's approximately fifteen, fifteen to twenty percent savings that a district has and they're pushing back after that employee to, to pay them more money. To say, I can give you specifics right now without going back to the data that we collected last, last year. I don't have that in front of me. I know last year when we brought them to the level that we brought them to, the minimum wage pushed that, pushed us to do it in February, maybe January. Again, we, we had some discussions with that group and with the board about potentially outsourcing, which would allow us to give them a higher wage. But we felt very, very, that it was very important to keep our staff in-house. And so the decision was made, obviously, last year, and then, you know, this is just a continuation of that based on the minimum wage increases that we're gonna see over the next couple of years.
Any more comments on this? Ms. Montague?
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Montague. I just, I'll just kind of agree with your point. I mean, I think, I think we all want the most amount of money that we can get for our staff because this is an important group and they do a great, do a great job. But I think it probably warrants looking at some of the other decisions that we've made and maybe to the extent that we can see how those line up with some of the other groups that we've decided. Because I know we've always tried to say, okay, we're gonna generally align with maybe kind of the average of what, you know, like schools do for this type of role. I know that these are somewhat unique. So I think as long as we can look at some more data and try to have consistency with what we decided before, then I think we can make more educated decisions, so that's what I advocate for.
Alright, we'll see, no other discussion points right now. We'll give us a, until the next meeting to, unless you get this a little further and decide if we want to put it on consent or, or maybe just stick it on as an action. I know next, the next meeting would be, but now we're gonna have further discussion of the meeting too, so. Alright, there is no closed session this evening. So students who came for class, way to go. First meeting of the year, you got it out of the way, and it was a pretty easy one. So good work, because some of your friends will be here in December, gave me the thought at that moment. So anyway, with that, we are adjourned at seven o'clock. Anybody up here can sign your sheets for class, so you can bring mine up and everybody can go.
Yeah.